Before I call this meeting to order, I would like to note we have interpretation services for this meeting. The interpreter this evening is Mrs. Villa Gragna in the back. Mrs. Villa Gragna, could you please raise your hand? Okay, and if you need a listening service advice, you can ask her in the back. Antes de llamar a la junta orden, me gustaría notar que contamos con servicios de interpretación para esta junta, y la señora Gragna está ahí atrás. I'd like to call this meeting to order for the City Council meeting of March 7, 2023. Madam Clerk, could you please make an announcement and call the roll?
In order to participate in the City Council meeting virtually, please register to speak using the link on the agenda under Public Comment, or call 1-669-900-9128, and use webinar ID number 83512087046 to raise your hand to speak on a particular agenda item. Please use the Raise Hand button in the Zoom meeting portal. If you are using a phone, please press *9 on your telephone keypad to raise your hand to speak. Press *6 to unmute your phone. When it is your time to speak, your microphone will be unmuted for the time allotted by the mayor and will be muted upon completion of your comments. Councilmember Aguilar Hernandez?
Here.
Councilmember Cordero?
Here.
Councilmember Escobedo?
Here.
Councilmember Soto?
Here.
Madam Mayor Patino?
Here. City Manager, Mr. Watson, would you like to give the closed session report?
Fortunately, I'm not the city manager.
Did I say city manager?
Yes.
Oh, my gosh.
Nor would I want that job. With respect to the closed session...
The other guy, okay.
Exactly.
City Attorney.
Better-looking guy next to me. With respect to the closed session conference with labor negotiators, instructions were provided and information, no further information is necessary to report.
Thank you. My apologies. I just got back from a conference, and I got home just about an hour ago from Riverside, so... The next item on the agenda this evening is the public comment period. Madam Clerk, would you please read the criteria for the public comment portion of the agenda?
This time is reserved to accept comments from the public on consent agenda items, closed session items, or matters not otherwise scheduled on the printed agenda this evening. Unless otherwise directed by the mayor, speakers will have three minutes to comment. Direction to staff may be given. However, state law does not allow action to be taken on matters not on the printed agenda. Once the public comment period commences, no other speakers will be allowed to submit a request to speak for them.
Madam Clerk, do we have any speakers this evening?
Madam Mayor, we have three.
Three, okay.
And none in the Zoom meeting portal.
Thank you. Jerry Kaufman, followed by Jeanette Contreras, followed by Gary Hall. Good evening.
Good evening. Madam Mayor, City Council members, my name is Jerry Kaufman. I'm with the Vietnam Veterans of America, Chapter 982 out of Guadalupe. This year, our chapter will be placing wreaths at the veterans' graves at the Santa Maria Cemetery. This happens on December 16 of this year, beginning at 12 noon. We will have a brief ceremony, beginning with our National Anthem, and ending with playing of taps. Anyone who has a veteran relative at the Santa Maria Cemetery will have the privilege of laying that wreath at their relative's grave. After that, all the others will be placed. We would also... We are looking for anyone local area that would sing the National Anthem, and also someone of playing of taps. We would entertain especially school kids. They'd be ideal. We would also like someone to bless the wreath, if anybody knows of anyone. So we need lots of volunteers. This is a big project. Not only placing the wreath, but picking up the wreath, which happens on January 6, 2024. And of course, getting folks and businesses behind this operation, getting involved, and buying the wreath. The cost is $17 each. They are shipped from Maine by trucking companies that donate their time and energy. I've left flyers of our event and some of my cards with contact information with the city clerk. A Brief History of Wreaths Across America. And by the way, if you go online, you can read all about wreaths across America. It's been going for quite some time. Morale Warchester started this as a side business, making and selling wreaths at Christmas time. One year, he had quite a few wreaths left over. He donated them to Arlington National Cemetery. And so the story got started. In 2007, it became known as Wreaths Across America, a nonprofit organization. In 2014, 700,000 wreaths were placed on veterans' graves at over 1,000 locations. In that same year, 226,525 wreaths were placed at Arlington National Cemetery for every veteran there. Wreaths Across America continues to grow in the U.S. and across the waters, in American cemeteries, in Europe, and other parts of the world. Our chapter has been doing this since 2019. We have placed wreaths at over eight different cemeteries throughout Santa Barbara and San Luis Obispo County. Thank you for your time.
Thank you very much, and I certainly will be there. I've done the flags on Veterans Day, and I will have my mayor's youth task force will also be there.
Well, thank you very much.
Thank you. Jeanette Contreras and Lynn Gary Hall.
Hello. My name is Jeanette Contreras. I would like to thank all of you for your time and hearing me out with my concerns. I've lived in Santa Maria for a little over 30 years, always in Tanglewood. There is a lot of hardworking people out there and really don't complain much. In fact, it's generations. Three of my neighbors, and myself included, have their parents that live out there. My main topic is Black Road and Mahoney Road. I have been emailing numerous city staff members with very little responses since 2018. With all the rain, it's made it much worse. I know a lot of the roads in town are getting bad because of the rain, but in Mahoney Road and Black Road, it's pretty bad. The potholes have only been patched by the city, but the road's never been fixed since the city's taken over that road from the county. I recently purchased a 2020 vehicle that now needs its second alignment. Maintenance on it has gotten pretty expensive just because of the type of vehicle it is. I was rejected a claim recently by the city to fix my car and asked that I take it to small claims. I've had to make installment payments to fix my car, so I'm not sure how I would take it to small claims and hire an attorney, especially getting the car brand-new. I just ask that you guys please take my concerns into consideration and looking into redoing that road. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Gary Hall?
Good evening, Madam Mayor, council members, staff, and citizens of Santa Maria. My name is Gary Hall. I'm a resident of Rancho Buena Vista Mobile Estates at 2135 North Railroad Avenue here in Santa Maria. I represent the North Santa Barbara County Mobile Homeowners Team, or NSBIT. I've been coming to this microphone for over four years, asking Santa Maria to join the over 100 other California jurisdictions that have provided their mobile home park residents with protection from excessive rent increase, and in that way helped maintain affordable housing for their seniors and their low-income citizens. Then, as you know, on June 7, 2022, already 39 weeks ago, the Santa Maria City Council approved the following motion, and I quote, "Following council discussion and public input on motion, direction was given to staff to work with community members and park owners to examine enhancing the model lease agreement to see if there was room for improvement and to look at alternatives." Thank you again, Councilmember Soto, Escobedo, Councilmember Cordero, for passing this motion. Since its passage, the mobile home resident representatives have participated in three stakeholder meetings, with the most recent just two weeks ago. We are pleased to announce a real sense of progress. Our summary of issues and proposed solutions document that was delivered to the city representatives on January 9 has prompted serious conversations and offers some guidance for possible improvements to the existing model lease. The February 22 stakeholder meeting has produced genuine optimism. Thank you, Councilmembers Soto, Escobedo, Assistant City Manager Hackelman, and Assistant City Attorney Patrick, for your willingness to listen and to allow mutually respectable conversation to move forward. Follow-up meetings are tentatively scheduled for this month, including a joint meeting with park owner representatives. The overall goal for the mobile home residents remains to provide protection to all Santa Maria mobile home residents presently living in an unregulated rental market where the current model lease program has been ineffective in protecting homeowners' equity and maintaining affordable mobile home housing. We believe that goal is achievable. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Hall. That concludes the public comment portion of the agenda. And before we move on, Mr. Stillwell, did you have any comments?
Sure, just briefly. Thank you, Madam Mayor, members of the council. We are aware of the condition of Mahoney Road. As the speaker mentioned, when it did come to the city from the county, it was below city standards, and we've been working to find funding for that, and we do have funding through the infrastructure fund to repair the road in the next budget cycle.
Thank you.
And Black, yeah, Black has, so there's different, Black has a broader problem due to the adjacent development that we've been talking about, and with stormwater runoff issues. So that's multiple, Black is a more complicated repair.
Moving on to the consent calendar, Madam Clerk, could you please read the description?
Routine items are presented for City Council approval without discussion as a single agenda item in order to expedite the meeting. The consent calendar is approved by roll call vote with one motion. These items are discussed only on the request of council members. Members of the public may speak on consent items during public comment.
Does anyone have items they wish to pull for discussion?
Not for discussion, but for a separate vote, Madam Mayor.
Okay.
Item 11G.
11G? Sure, go ahead and read 11G.
11G is Raimi and Associates Professional Services Agreement for Design Standards. The recommendation is to approve a professional services agreement for the preparation of objective design standards for housing projects in the city of Santa Maria.
Do you want to comment on it?
No.
No, that's it? Okay. Okay.
Did you say 11G?
Yeah.
Right.
Okay.
That's the acrostic patch.
Yes.
Yes, okay. Do I have a motion then to approve the consent calendar with the exception of 11G?
So moved.
Second. Okay, I have a motion and a second. Madam Clerk, can you please call the roll?
Councilmember Cordero?
Aye.
Councilmember Aguilar Hernandez?
Aye.
Councilmember Soto?
No.
Councilmember Escobedo?
Aye.
Madam Mayor Patino?
Aye. Okay, now we go to 11G.
Oh.
Yeah, we were...
But that's the consent calendar?
No, I was calling for all the consent calendar.
My apologies.
That's okay.
Can I change my vote to yes?
Sure.
[laughing]
Okay. Okay, now I need a motion for 11G.
So moved.
And a second?
Second.
Any discussion? A hearing, none. Madam Clerk, can you please call the roll?
Councilmember Cordero?
Aye.
Councilmember Aguilar Hernandez?
Aye.
Councilmember Escobedo?
No.
Councilmember Soto?
No.
Madam Mayor Patino?
Aye. Madam Kerry. Next, we have a public hearing. Madam Clerk, could you please read the title?
The City Council will consider a recommendation of the Planning Commission to review a downtown permit for the Vernon Group to convert an existing 84,000-square-foot structure to a two-story, 104-unit residential use on 1.3-acre site in the Town Center District of Downtown Specific Plan.
So the staff report is to be made by the Director of Community Development, Mr. Ing.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, members of the City Council. This is a presentation for the Heritage Walk Lofts at 201 Town Center West. This is an aerial photo of the project site. It's essentially the center of Santa Maria. You can see Town Center West, where the property site is located. This is the building that was formerly occupied by the old Mervins and Falls Department Store on the west side of Broadway. On the east side of Broadway, you have the mall site and also offices. And you can see some large parking lots adjacent to the building. You may be aware, there is a significant redevelopment effort that's also in partnership with Vernon Construction. This property, however, is not part of the city-owned parcels that the city has been negotiating with Vernon. This is owned by Vernon, and this is, again, separate from those city-owned efforts with Vernon. A reminder of the Downtown Specific Plan, the latest revision was adopted back in 2015. We've been talking a lot about downtown redevelopment, and here we have a project that seeks to implement the vision of the Downtown Specific Plan. The specific plan seeks to have a pedestrian-friendly environment, one that brings vibrancy to the area with commercial uses, residential uses, open spaces, plazas. This is a residential project, but it's one component of a larger vision for the specific plan. These are existing images. Actually, it's not quite existing. The sign is down. This picture has a sign. Another image, again, the sign's down. So the property is pretty much the perimeter of the building, and it does not include the parking areas. And in total, it's about 1.3 acres. The building itself is almost 86,000 square feet. And this is important to note, because when the property was acquired, there was an effort to look for commercial uses that could go into the building. But nowadays, with the changes in the retail landscape, it is actually fairly difficult to find a commercial user that would take up this much space. Another example would be the old Costco building on Bradley that's been very difficult to fill. So the property owner has looked at different options for this building, and the proposal is an apartment building with 104 loft-style residential units. And these are not the typical apartment projects that we see in the past, but these are apartments with tall ceilings, 18-foot ceilings, with lofts. And also, this comes with a rooftop deck, a community room, bike storage rooms, private patios and decks. There's a central courtyard that's open to the sky, and there's some images that I'll show in a moment. Real quick on the parking, there are several hundred parking spaces surrounding the building. The total count is actually over 600. The specific plan has a pretty low requirement for parking. That's due to the location of downtown and proximity to other parking structures. So there is parking to serve the site. There is an existing agreement, an REA, that governs the parking, and the users of Town Center West have access to this parking. But on the north side of this building, there are 376 spaces in the area where the farmer's market typically takes place. On the southern end, there are 273 spaces. This is the area where Downtown Fridays takes place, and then there's another 272 parking spaces in that shopping center where Rite Aid and Big Five is located. There are some incentives that are being offered to the applicant, and this is in negotiation with staff and also with approval from the Planning Commission. We're offering 50% reduction in building permit fees, not including third-party review. We're also offering a deferral of mitigation fees over a 10-year period. We've done something similar for Hancock Terrace. We're using a reduced fee rate for subdivision and lieu fees. These are rec and park fees. You may be aware, the fee for each unit now is about 2,700. The 2016 fee is about 1,900. So that's a discount of about $800 per unit. And in the contractual use, the ability to use the city parking lots, that in itself is also a benefit and incentive. Again, these are the frontages, and I'm going to show some images of the proposal. This is an elevation of the courtyard. So it's essentially a square box. The building is in the shape of a square box. But in order to provide natural lighting to all the residential units, you have to create the ability for natural light to enter through the windows and into the residential units. And so instead of a square box, you have somewhat of a U-shaped and access into a central courtyard. This is an image of that access into the central courtyard. There are a lot of windows, and again, natural lights are a requirement for residences. And so the modification of this building would include opening this up to allow that natural light for the residences. This is a floor plan that shows the arrangement of the residential apartments. You can see in the center, that's the courtyard, that's the open space, that's for the residents. And you can see the layout of the proposed apartments. That's pretty much the perimeter that runs the perimeter of the building. Two stories, 51 lofts on the second floor, and then 51 or 54, it's split between the first and second floor roughly. There's also a community roof deck, so there's access to the roof for the residents. These are some floor plans. Again, these are loft units. There are these loft areas that offer additional sleeping or living areas with 18-foot-tall ceilings. This is more of a cross-section of the building, so you can see that that center area is a courtyard where there'll be landscaping and hardscape, and you can see how the apartments is split between the first and second floors. These are additional elevations. The best way to describe this is a blend, a blend of traditional and contemporary. There are Spanish and Mission elements through the arches, through the ironwork, but the large windows and the use of wood reflects a more contemporary Here's another image. Again, you see the use of arches. There is articulation in the building plane. It's no longer a flat wall. It varies back and forth. The windows are large, and again, there'll be hardscape and landscape that will soften the facade. This is a landscape plan. It's a little bit hard to tell by the symbols here, but there will be perimeter landscaping, landscaping the courtyards, landscaping on the rooftop. These are just images of the proposed landscape species. As a reminder, this is one component of a larger redevelopment effort for Town Center West, and the Planning Commission looked at this in February, but there were also a couple of meetings back in 2022. We had a joint meeting with the Downtown Committee, the City Council, and the Planning Commission back in December to talk about architecture. And there was also a prior Downtown Committee meeting in 2022. This is what we call an adaptive reuse project. Adaptive reuse refers to the process of using an existing building for a purpose other than which it was originally built or designed for. So again, it's taking a large, big-box, commercial building and turn it into a residential use that is different for the city. With that, the recommendation to the City Council is that by resolution, we ask that the council approve the downtown permit, DT 2022-0018, for the Heritage Walk Lofts. Welcome any questions you may have. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Ing. Any questions from the council?
I do, Madam.
Oh, Mr. Escobedo.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Question to change, you know, in this area, everything's commercial, and there are some, a lot of businesses that will be impacted one way or the other. What has been the outreach efforts to, you know, have a conversation with them? What's, have you guys hear from the businesses and the church?
Madam Mayor, Councilmember Escobedo, there have been many efforts, many workshops over the last several years regarding downtown projects. This project in particular, we've had several meetings on a study session with Planning Commission, and Planning Commission meeting. Notices were mailed out to nearby property owners. In terms of actual outreach to the businesses, I believe they are aware of the plans that are in place. I think some of the feedback that we've heard is that they do look forward to the redevelopment of Town Center, because there is a belief that it would bring more foot traffic to the area. But also, we do hear also concerns about compatibility and parking. And so certainly the use, such as the church, I know that the applicant team has reached out to the church to talk about parking and making sure that the uses are compatible and that, say, for the hours in which the church is open, that there's a certainty that parking spaces can be available for members of the church. And so, but I think, generally speaking, there is a thought that, you know, I think every business wants to be successful, and this would bring that foot traffic, that vibrancy. But we're very mindful of issues such as parking, and wouldn't want to negatively impact the existing businesses.
And what about Downtown Fridays?
Downtown Fridays, yes. I've been speaking with Ed Carr Kerry on potential future locations. He's, and we've talked about a couple of different possibilities, and whether, he's always had a desire for that activity to take place on a street as opposed to a parking lot. And so we've been talking about that possibility, but we are in regular communication about that.
Thank you.
Any other questions, Mr. Ing? The applicant, would they like to make a few comments? Good evening.
Good evening, Mayor Patino, council members. I'm Randy Russel with RM Design Group out of San Luis Obispo, and I do believe we have a presentation we sent in, although that was well-covered to begin with, so I'll be answering more questions than anything else. I do have representatives of the Vernon Group with me, so as we, that will become very helpful too, as we go forward in this. The questions that some of the, on negotiations and talks that have been going on, they'll probably be the better person to answer that. So it is my honor to be able to bring this project forward to you. It becomes... It becomes one of the keystones in the Town Center West redevelopment and puts you on the leading edge of what adaptive reuse looks like at big-box stores. Can we just take, will this advance my slides? I'm sorry. Yeah, we got this. Okay, so. Did a great job introducing where this project is, and we all know it. For me, it goes back to Mervyn's back when I was in college. So it's in everyone's mind for a long time here. But to just give you an idea, orientation on the site plan, bottom page, where bottom page right is the corner that would face Broadway, and we've got both of the primary entries oriented towards that street. Of course, that corner is the orientation of the building itself. We do want to just briefly mention that this fits well within your downtown-specific plan goals. We've, the project as a whole for Town Center West is designed to bring life back to this area as you envisioned it. This particular project is very residential-focused, on a building that sat empty for a long time. And we believe it's going to be a great boon for the future development as well as the local businesses that are there. This graphic is just to indicate circulation through the site. We do also include opportunities for onsite bike parking, especially in these smaller units. It's great to have that placement outside the building in secure areas as opposed to expecting them in the units. This is the most fundamental part of this project, though, is the building design. This, I don't know that there was a point where this was an attractive building, but as an empty building, it certainly is not. But it represents a very large challenge in trying to convert this into a residential use. You'll note from the sections that while this building may be pushing 40 feet tall, we can really only get two levels because of the existing structure within the building, the red iron, to make this efficient to do. So we really had to get creative with that, and that's why you're seeing a loft design in here, where we can go to smaller ceiling heights in some areas and provide sleeping areas and upper bedrooms that split these units and actually become a very modern feel inside there. On the exterior of the building, this is, we're terming it as a transitional style between a contemporary and speaking back towards some of the traditional Spanish elements that we see throughout the community. It would be impractical and dishonest to the building to try to cover it with a bunch of tile and make it look like a, well, the building we're in now. That would not be, it'd be taking away from the history of the community and not adding to it. So we try to find a balance between that. We are bringing things like, elements like arches, like the wrought iron detailing. We're putting tile cap on some of the walls, out the balconies. So we bring some of the colors and the textures and materials, but putting them in a little bit of a new way to fit with this contemporary design that we feel is honest to the building, fits within the community, and is really targeted at what the actual market would be looking for in a product like this. Again, you've seen this. I don't need to belabor the materials board unless you want to talk about it. And that's where we actually integrated a little tile into there. The only other thing I want to touch on is the central courtyard and how this building is really oriented. This right now is, you know, there are no windows. There's a few doors on the building, and even traditional apartment complexes you'll see are very inward-focused. If they had the old courtyard or swimming pool in the middle with everything towards the center, all you get is outside is maybe a few windows. This project, being as a centerpiece here, is oriented both inward with a courtyard that's about, I'm getting 60 by 80 feet roughly inside there with a lot of opportunity for light, as well as all the outside units have balconies or patios outside. So we're bringing life to this part of the town, not just an enclave of itself locked off. And I think that's, I think, a great asset that this particular project has. You've looked at the landscape plan. I don't need to go through that. I'm here to answer your questions. As I said, we've got members of the Vernon Group here also for that. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Any questions of the council? Ms. Soto?
My question is to staff regarding the parking. Did you say that, how are you all ensuring that the, like the church or even the gastroenterologist's parking lots are not impacted?
Okay. Can we just keep the questions to him right now if we have any questions right now?
Can the applicant answer that?
Just the app. He can, yeah.
Sure, we can answer.
Have you been in conversation with city staff?
Yes. Evening, Mayor, council members. My name is Brad Vernon with the Vernon Group. Thanks for the question and happy to answer any other ones that you have. So with the existing use of the building that we won't name here, the, starts with an F, there were 380 parking spaces assigned to it under the REA. Under the downtown-specific plan, it calculates out to about 97 that we're going to need. So it's a pretty significant net reduction in parking needs. Of course, we will need those additional parking spaces for future phases, in particular the Lot 1 project that's going to be coming online in the future. But does that help?
For now, yeah.
Yeah, net negative parking on this particular project.
And on page number four of our staff report.
I saw that.
Yeah, it gives that whole list of parking and the agreements that we have. Yeah. Any questions of the applicant? Mr. Escobedo?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. So this loft will be for rent, market rate, right?
Correct.
And have you guys had any thoughts about selling these units? Are you, what's your business model?
I think there is some internal discussion we're having on some of the future phases and looking at potentially making them for sale, condo-type products. There's a lot that goes into that. In particular, on an adaptive reuse, it's very difficult to address some of the issues that go with sale. So with this particular building, it would be a pretty tough one to do that with, specifically with getting individual utilities to each particular unit as opposed to using common meters and things like that. So we're exploring it as part of the greater Town Center project. Really hard to do on this one.
And one of the questions would be, what value are you guys bringing to this area in downtown from your perspective? And yeah, so, you know, what's your perspective on that?
I like that question. I think what's going to be really important for making the downtown vibrant and busy and successful is people. And I think getting the housing downtown is going to be the key. We had some good opportunity to do a tour up to Santana Row and get a good feel for that type of development where it's, you know, really, really creating a pedestrian area. And as opposed to using a car, you're just going down to the first floor and able to get your coffee, your meal, the whole bit. You can kind of live on-site. So I think the housing, you know, phase one is this and hundreds of units to follow in future phases. But that's going to bring the, that's going to make it vibrant. People are going to want to be there. Businesses are going to thrive. It's going to be, it's going to be a really good thing backed on the housing.
Yeah, and my question is, because, I mean, the community will be, it's adding value to your project. I mean, we're subsidizing part of the permits and plus the incentive. So that's kind of like where I want to go to. It's how we can, what are we getting, what the community is getting in exchange of what the taxpayers are giving to the value? And yeah, I think it's keeping in consideration the sales aspect of it. It's something that for my constituents is very important because, you know, that can create this generational wealth, and so they can roll over. I understand that, you know, you're in the business, and that's, and that's, you know, it is what it is. And this is, would be kind of like a comment to our staff, trying to incentivize that part of, you know, loft. It's an interesting concept, that it's more affordable than an apartment or a house. But I would like to see how we, and this for the staff, of course, how we can incentivize to bring projects and that can, that are more focused on creating an opportunity for residents to own and have that opportunity. Maybe owning a loft, it's going to be more affordable than buying a house. So that's something I would like to see more in a, I know, you know, in the last couple of minutes, we've been approving a lot of rentals. So how we can incentivize, if we're going to incentivize, if we're going to subsidize and using some of our taxpayers' money, how we can use them for projects that also can give an opportunity to own. I know that rent market is there, but also we have the other part that it's owning. And so we can, you know, when you sell, you also create a sense of ownership, and people will stay here in Santa Maria and pass it over to their future generations. So, yeah, thank you.
Yeah, I can, I think in terms of, you know, what value we're bringing, I think probably the biggest key is that the city is making an investment, and this is something that's going to pay dividends down the road. I think it's very important to get the people into the area. The businesses are going to thrive, the rents come in, the city makes tax, you know, tax revenue. A year and a half ago, when we started the process, the competitive RFP process, we went through a pretty detailed tax analysis, and I don't have that, but it's a, it was a pretty good, this project is a good net positive. And that was also before it's grown in size. So we've added more. So in theory, there's even more net positive in terms of tax as time goes on. I don't have that, but Chun may be able to add in a bit.
Mr. Seawell.
Excuse me. I have, Mr. Vernon speaking too. So the, specifically the downtown-specific plan that the city council adopted had three particular vision statements and goals. One is to have a culturally rich environment that reflects the community. Second, a safer, inviting, and pedestrian-oriented downtown area, and a downtown area with diverse entertainment opportunities. So the project as the Vernon submitted is consistent with those goals. And there are maybe other goals the city council has moving forward, but we're still working with the general plan and the downtown-specific plan vision as articulated by the council.
Any other questions of Mr. Vernon?
Oh, yeah, sorry.
Yes, Mr. Escobedo?
You mentioned there's going to be like a roof. It's a rooftop kind of area, and those, it was mentioned, will be accessible for residents that live in, just inside, they're renters, right?
Correct.
It's not going to be like open for.
Yeah, we are definitely exploring that, and we want to have those areas available as we move forward. Again, this one is a little bit different. It's not a new build, so there's a lot of technical issues in making that work. And this one is essentially 100% residential, so we would not want to give the general public access to this one. But there are other spaces that we're looking to give more vertical access to public.
Gotcha. Thank you.
Mr. Cudero.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I really don't have a question, just a comment. I think out of everyone here, I was probably the hardest pull to get this to go, and I realize that. So I just want to share that I've come a long ways in learning from you guys and the trip that we took to San Jose. And this, the architect's rendition up here, it transitioned the building for me, and I'm, I still have a level of skepticism on whether or not this will completely fly, but I'm a lot more comfortable with it now than I was. And I look forward to the challenges that we'll all face in entering into this new phase of accommodating our community needs here. And it's been a true learning process for me, not only with you folks, but even on my own, things that I did. And I think I shared some things with other people that I went as far away as a couple of thousand miles in order to learn some things. Not because of that, I was there already and did the learning. And it's been a great experience to go through to, whether, no matter how it comes out, it's been a great learning experience. And I think you guys have been accommodating to our needs. And one particular area was with the memorial, which we haven't yet talked about, that's coming up a little later on the agenda. But thank you very much for your innovation and listening to what we're trying to get accomplished here for our community. Thank you.
Thank you. We're excited, yeah.
Any other questions?
Hey, Madam Kirk, I'd like to open up the public hearing. And do we have any requests to speak or written correspondence?
Yes, Madam Mayor. First of all, staff received a written comment from Tom Emery, who expressed concerns about parking for the church and future development in the downtown as it relates to parking. Copies were provided at the dais for council's review. And we have one request to speak here in the building and none on Zoom.
Thank you.
Thank you. I have talked publicly about this before, but I feel it's important. Good evening. My name is Cliff Solomon, and I am a member of the Santa Maria's First United Methodist Church. I'd like to address the conversion of the old Fallus Building into the Heritage Walk Lofts and how this construction will affect the neighborhood and the church. I'm especially concerned about how the work will impact the church's parking spaces. We have approximately 135 members, plus there is a Korean Methodist church that uses our building. And we have a significant number of elderly members, people who need to park close to our building. I hope that we will continue to have adequate parking. In the past, there has been confusion about how many parking spaces are on land owned by the church versus how many are owned by the city. I'm happy to say that a dialogue has been set up between the church board of trustees and the city and the developer, and this dialogue has been initiated. And hopefully, this confusion will be dealt with, and the church will be left with enough parking for our needs. Also, I am curious how this development will affect the current neighborhood. How does it fit in with the businesses that currently exist on Main Street and Town Center West? How will it impact Santa Maria's Downtown Fridays? I am concerned about the support of Downtown Fridays because I think this is a very, very important event for the makeup of our city. I understand the need to build more housing. I hope that the considerations of the neighborhood surrounding the old Fallus Building and of my church will be kept in mind. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Solomon. You know, I think this is really important on the parking. Parking has become such an issue with all the building that's going on, and I think it's really important to respect the needs of the parking at the church and with the elderly. And that, instead of, instead of abdicating some of our position on the parking, I think it's really important, at least it is to me, and I know it's important, Ms. Soto, that we keep that parking so that, and so I don't know exactly what the agreements are or what the conversation has been, but there have been a couple of people that have contacted me on the parking. Mr. Seawell?
Sure, we are continuing those discussions, Madam Mayor. The issue on it is there's private-owned parking for the church and the gastroenterologists, and then there's city-owned parking. And in the 1970s, the city granted an exclusive use easement of the city-owned parking to Mervyn's, which continues to run with the land. And so there's discussions of how this works as the site has the reuse. And so there's discussions of how this works as the, as the site has the reuse. And we'll continue those discussions.
Okay, so where, where is the church parking and where does that stop and with the city parking?
Yeah. Do you know? Yeah.
Madam Mayor, members of the council, it's a little bit hard to see on this area, but there's, there's a group of parking spaces that's closest to, to the church building that's, that's for the church and the spaces that are again adjacent to the, the former Mervyn's are city owned surface parking lots.
But I can't see it. So I, I don't know what you're talking about. So how, how many spaces and, and how?
Yeah.
Yeah, we'll have to prepare another diagram for you, but the, the Methodist Church building is on the corner. The medical offices are directly to the west and so there are, there are some parking spaces on the, on the southern side closest to Cook Street that are privately owned. I don't have a, a line for you, but.
Yeah, I, I would really like to see that because I think that's really important. When you talk about parking.
Is the one that, the entrance is on, you, through Cook, Cook Street?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yes.
Do you know how many of those are?
I, I don't have a count on the, on the private parking spaces.
Okay. I, I think before we finish this, at least for me, before we finish this up, I want to make sure what we're talking about and not just give an okay just because, you know, we're saying there's enough parking. Ms. Soto.
Thank you for raising that comment, Madam Mayor. And I'd say the same for the gastroenterologist office as well because I'm sure that.
Yeah.
I, I don't want to hinder.
Right.
People's access to healthcare.
And I'm just, and, and it's going to be different times because you've got the Sunday and, Mr. Solomon, do you have any other days of the week that you guys do, do a lot of gathering there besides Sundays?
Occasionally there are, are meetings in the evenings.
But not, probably, probably not the size that you have on Sundays, right?
Correct.
Okay. Okay. Yeah, I would like to get that clarified, at least for me.
I have a question.
Any, Mrs. Aguilera?
So I do have a question regarding the parking. So the report does say that half of a parking space is required for each unit and then a point seven five parking space for units 400 to 600 square feet. How does that make sense? If I live there, I can't park in half a parking space.
Yes, Madam Mayor, member, council member, Aguilera Hernandez, the, the downtown specific plan has these kind of strange ratios that are less than a space because there are some assumptions that some may not own a car or, or some may use a city parking structure. And so even though the report says 97 require, that's not the expectation. We're not expecting that, that there would only be 97 cars. I think we would expect that there would be more cars for 104 apartments. And so that just refers back to the specific plan and at, and at some point, you know, that, that's worth taking a look at again and seeing whether that's appropriate or not. And.
Thank you. So my question is, how do we go at amending that? Because a practicality is that even if a person lives in a, in a unit that is 400 square feet, they would need a one full parking space.
Yes, and so that's what we're, we're looking at this area as a whole. And there are, so when, in thinking about the parking that's required for the church, the parking that's required for the apartments, so 104 apartments, a church, a medical office building, there is good confidence that within the area, in the parking, north of the building, in the parking south of the building, again, and for the whole center, there's over 600 spaces. So there's some comfort level that, that within the 600 spaces, it can accommodate 104 apartments, a church and a medical office building. That agreement has not been fully defined, but we're, we're confident that from the existing spaces that are there today, that it could serve the three uses that I mentioned, the, the 104 apartments, medical office and a church.
Okay. And I have a question and a suggestion for that. So in order to, in order to protect the parking for the church, I would suggest that we do reserve parking, a sign that says you cannot park here or apartment parking cannot park here on Sundays from whatever time to whatever time or have their service so that we're giving them the opportunity to go to church and not worry about parking. I think it would be a burden for the churchgoers to have to worry about parking. So maybe that would solve, no, that's a, a middle ground where we would say to the apartment guests, on the weekends, this is where you can and cannot park.
Given the comment that Ms., or the context that Mr. Stilwell said, is that something that Vernon would be willing to do?
Just to clarify, to put up some no parking signs on the church's parking that they own to keep our tenants off of there?
Yes.
Yeah, I think, I think that we'd be happy to do that. Again, with 100 spaces, you know, we see the uses significantly less than the 380 spaces that Mervyn's previously used. I believe it worked then, so I, I would hope that there wouldn't be any conflicts, but more than happy to put up signage if, if that's something you see as helpful.
Thank you.
Okay. Ms. Ring?
Madam Mayor.
Sorry. Did you, did you want to say?
Yes, Madam Mayor, members of the council, I just want to call out that there is a condition that states that before building permits can be issued, that a final parking agreement is done between the applicant and the city. So, so before we issue the building permit, we'll, we'll make sure that there's enough for the various uses at Town Center.
Thank you. Okay, and I, I really trust you. I just, I feel just really uncomfortable when it comes to parking anymore because boy, that is the big issue every place and we have made a lot of mistakes on that. And it's not that intentionally, you know, I mean, the state mandates that come down and everything, but I, I really, I want to feel that level of comfort and, and I was going to, but it, that's fine if we have that coming. I didn't know if we, if we passed the resolution without the number four of the parking in it or just go ahead and pass it with that and then we can come back and do the parking?
I'll, I'll just add one more comment relates to that. So if we, if we just talk about the area that's north, northeast of the building, so that where the farmer's market is at, there's, there's enough parking spaces to serve the loft apartments just in and of itself. So I, I think there's enough parking without even touching the area on the southern side of the building where the church is located or where the medical office is located.
Okay. Okay, I am going to close the public hearing, bring this item back to the council for any further discussion and/or a motion.
I would like to clarify, Madam Mayor, are you, are you asking if we can approve the project without the parking?
Yes.
So that we can get a map?
But he said, he said that we could, that there still has to be the agreement for the parking prior to the map, right?
Right. Prior to issuing a building permit. And so I, I just pulled up the slide that shows the parking count. So if you look at that, that northern area where it shows 376, there's a confidence over that 376 would be sufficient for 104 units. Even if you do two parking spaces per unit, that'd be 208. So that northerly area would have an excess than what, what's calculated for two per apartment.
I just, you know, you, you had their SB 35 going on up there south and then we have these apartments where they don't allow enough parking and we're just getting a lot of that. So I, I just really want to feel comfortable with this before we pass that. But then we can come back to that, right? Okay. You feel comfortable, Mr. Solomon?
Yes.
Thank you. Okay. So do I have a motion and a second on this?
I move that we approve Heritage Walk Lofts downtown permit at 201 Town Center West.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? If not, Madam Clerk, can you please call the roll?
Councilmember Aguilera Hernandez?
Aye.
Councilmember Soto?
Aye.
Councilmember Escobedo?
Before casting my vote, I would like to just make a quick comment in regards how, you know, I see some.
Mr. Escobedo, we've, we've done the discussion. Can you either give us a yes or a no on that?
Yes, Madam Mayor, but this is not the discussion point. It's just a comment and I would like to make it before casting my vote. And I see some affordability portion in this lot. I'm, I'm really, that's something positive of this project and, and I, and I think that's.
Ms. Escobedo, I'm, I'm getting a nod from our attorney. It has to be a yes or a no.
It's inappropriate.
It's, it's inappropriate.
It's appropriate or legal.
At this time, the, the discussion was closed, so it's the pleasure of the mayor, but she has asked you to vote, so a vote would be appropriate.
But wouldn't that be covered by the, the First Amendment?
Okay, would you like to vote yes or no on this?
So.
Okay. If you'd like to, we'll take a vote. If you want to make a comment after that, you may go ahead.
And I would like to just think that I have a good faith on, on what you mentioned about the future of providing units that can be sold. So because of that, I will say yes.
Councilmember Cordero?
Aye.
Madam Mayor, Patino?
Aye. Motion carried. Next, we have a regular business item. Madam Clerk, could you please read the title?
The city council will receive an update on stakeholder discussions and proposed improvements to the Firefighters Memorial on the southeast corner of Main and Broadway.
The staff report is being made by Assistant City Manager. I didn't see you there, Mr. Hackelman. Mr. Hackelman?
Good evening, Madam Mayor and council members. It's great to be before you today to give you an update on this topic. It's, it's an important topic and I was just thinking about this when, you know, the item was coming up. It's been almost 53 years. So April 25th of 1970, there was a fire and firefighter Alvin Newton was killed on that day. And there's a memorial here in the city on the corner of Main and Broadway by Bank of America there that, that memorializes that, that day. And I'm going to talk to you and kind of set up the discussion that we're going to have with you today, but at first I want to acknowledge that we have some important stakeholders in the room. We have the family members of, of Alvin Newton here, his son and daughter and his surviving spouse. We also have a firefighter here who was there on that day. We also have firefighters that are active now and retired, including those representing our firefighters union. So we have a very broad and diverse group of, of stakeholders here today that, that have an understandable and, and keen interest in this memorial and, and the events that happened on, on that day in 1970. And so as part of the development agreement that was signed between the city and the developer, the Vernon Group, this was an important item in that agreement, which, which is to address the firefighter memorial, right? So for, for Alvin Newton. But further, the council was very interested in ensuring that this issue was discussed and thoroughly vetted with, with the stakeholders and the family. And so staff and the developer and these stakeholders have met on three occasions, starting in October, again in November and also in January, to discuss what, you know, meaning memorial has for the family, for, you know, members of the firefighter community, but also for our community more broadly. And those discussions were, were very productive, but they were also very emotional. It's a, it's an important part of the city's history. It's, it's part of a, a family's history and, and a part of the history of our firefighters here in the city of Santa Maria. And so those discussions were centered around what, what, what needs to happen with that memorial? What, what needs to occur to make sure that it's something that, that is, is noticed, that is respectful and honors the, the memory of Alvin Newton? And so with those things in mind, we had these discussions. And over the course of these three meetings, we were able to really come together and collaborate on, on what the stakeholders would like to see. The memorial frankly is not very visible and, and not well-known to many people in the city and that's unfortunate. So we saw an opportunity, the family saw the opportunity and the stakeholders saw the opportunity as well as the developer to make an improvement there in terms of visibility and in terms of the quality of the memorial. An opportunity to, you know, take, you know, the, the future here in Santa Maria to make sure that that memorial is something that, that is noticed and that, that is present in an enduring way. And so I'm going to turn this over to our community development director, Mr. Ing, to talk through some slides that will give you a visual of the things that we discussed. And then I'm sure that a number of our stakeholders here will have the opportunity and want to speak, but thank you for your time and I'll be available for questions after this.
Thank you. Mr. Ing?
Madam Mayor, members of the council, I have some images to share. This again is the project site. This is the southeast corner of Main and Broadway, north of the Bank of America. And here's a, a concept site plan. As you're aware, there is a proposal for a mixed use building, but there are opportunities for plaza areas and more importantly, an opportunity to enhance the firefighters memorial and for, for Alvin Newton. This image shows a couple of plaza areas, one that's oriented towards the street and one that's oriented towards the parking lot on the south side. The larger plaza that's intended to be the memorial plaza is on the south side of the These are existing photos of the plaza currently. And these are pictures of the existing memorials. There's one for the firefighters with the, with the fireman's prayer and there's another one for the four corners. These are ideas and this is based on input that's been provided by the stakeholders and by the family members. There, there was discussion of a flag, there was discussion of a mural, there were discussions of renewed plaques. And so these are ideas. I'll kind of zoom in on, on some of these ideas in the following slides. To the left is, is an image of a mosaic mural. This was something that was brought up that would be, that would have a theme related to firefighting or, or public safety. And so that's just an example, example of a mosaic mural. And this could be located within one of the plaza areas and that faces towards the street, Broadway as an example, so that it would be visible from the street. On the right-hand side, you have plaques that are oriented towards a plaza areas. That's something else that was brought up and discussed amongst the stakeholders. These are preliminary images. That's timely. We didn't, so.
That was planned.
You can say that. These are preliminary images of the plaza areas. This would be the plaza area that's facing Main and Broadway right on the corner. So to the right, you can kind of see this, this archway and, and a mosaic that's, that's tucked underneath this, this archway. That's one possible location for the mosaic mural. And so that's integrated into the gathering area, integrated into the plaza. This is another, another rendering of the open space plaza area. So this, this would be looking at the plaza area that's to the south side, which was the primary memorial plaza. In this image, you can. In this image, you can kind of see a water fountain, there's, which would serve as a focal point for the plaza. There was some debate amongst the stakeholders of whether the focal point should be a water feature, like a fountain or a statue. We heard comments addressing both. There were desires for one and the other. So there hasn't been a conclusion to that yet, but this particular drawing shows a water feature. And this concludes staff's presentation. Again, these are just some ideas that were from the comments provided from the stakeholder group and in coordination with the applicant team and the architect team.
And Madam Mayor and council-
Yes.
In conclusion here, I think it's important to point out that we, as a team, we've discussed this, you know, with stakeholders and with the developer. And none of these images and ideas are what is going to take place on the site. That design has yet to come. And the stakeholders are going to be that core group that will be the effort in making sure that those things are determined, that they're acceptable. What we have determined, though, is that, you know, the ideas of the types of, you know, plaque, mural, those types of things, that those will be components of what will be integrated into the site in the future. So that's really where we're at with this, where, you know, there's a lot of detail and design decisions that are going to be made, and those are going to be made in partnership with the family and with the stakeholders. So I wanted to make that clear, and I think you'll hear more about that. But it's an important part of this update to you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Hackelman, and thank you, Mr. Ing. Any comments or questions from the council? Ms. Aguilar.
I wanted to disclose exporte communication with the Firefighters Association rep. I did meet with him, and he provided what their plans are in terms of getting a statue.
Thank you.
Likewise. Yeah, likewise.
Okay. Any requests to speak?
Madam Mayor, we have one.
Thank you.
None on Zoom.
Matthew Chirkop.
Good evening.
Good evening. Madam Mayor, City Council members, city staff. I want to reiterate what Mr. Hackelman said. This truly has been a partnership so far. Your council renewed interest in this item a few months ago, and it really started these conversations behind the scenes. We met here onsite with the city three times, and we met offsite as well with the developer, with the stakeholders. And conceptually, we like what's being proposed. Also, we have a lot of work to do in terms of fine-tuning what the proposal and what the site is actually going to look like. But we have established some guardrails, some budget, some space, and some general ideas and change authority for design. So, and a timeline, which is really important. So I'm really happy to be here and to just say that things are moving in the right direction. Really happy that this site is going to get the much-needed makeover that it deserves. Just to turn the clock back a little bit, in, I believe, 1988, this landscape section of this site was dedicated by City Council as the Alvin Newton Memorial Landscape Memorial Site. And something that wasn't in this report that has been discussed is actually naming this building after Alvin Newton, which is a huge commitment from the developer to do so. It'll properly honor Alvin Newton and the sacrifice that he made on that site. So I'm happy to answer any questions, even though I'm sure you can't ask me directly.
Mr. Cordero.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Matt, my question's easy. Do, as far as you know, the men and women with the Santa Maria Fire Department are whole on this issue?
Are we all on board with this proposal?
Essentially so, yes, sir.
Yes. Over the years, we've done different ceremonies and things there. And I will point to our unofficial department historian, Mike Canales, who's retired. But, you know, we've tried to update the site over the years and clean it up, but it is definitely, everyone is on board that this site needs an upgrade for sure. As Mr. Hackelman mentioned, almost 53 years to the day when he lost his life. And it was during a tough time when, the year before, we lost another firefighter in the city. So I think this is a step in the right direction. All the stakeholders are on board, and we're really excited to get moving on this project.
Thank you, sir.
Yeah, I really think it's going to be a much-needed improvement to honor our firefighters and to honor this person. And to, so it's so much more protected than where it is right there. Yeah.
Any other comments from the council? Mr. Escobedo.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Just a question. Is the, any, I heard that we got some relatives or family from, I don't know if you would be, would like to, you know, talk a little bit or, you know, give us your thoughts about what it's being presented? Do you like it, basically?
I'm just glad to see somebody's finally taken care of the place. I mean, for years and years, we've had that, and it's totally run down, nasty. It'd be nice to see it redone and people taking care of it. I mean, how many people even know that there is an Alvin Newton Memorial Plaza in town?
Aye.
It's very beautiful. And I think it's, and it was the Bradley Hotel Fire that claimed his life. So, I don't know. I think I'm glad to see people still remember him. We get on Facebook every month and a while, and I still, people tell me, they see about the new development stuff, and they're happy about it to see something's finally done after 50 years. And I, like I said, I liked it seeing it when I was little, because it would have meant more to me than when I'm old.
Thank you for sharing.
Thank you, Mr. Escobedo. Okay, yes.
One last thing that also I forgot, wasn't mentioned. Brett Vernon talked about allowing us some type of window space around that memorial plaza area for displaying, you know, historical items and very specific information about Alvin and the Bradley Hotel Fire. So that was very accommodating. And the location of this area will still allow for, like, a public gathering with the fire truck being present. There's room for all that, so we can host future events there, so.
You know, I know Clovis, California, has got bronze statues. Statues, I think in front of the Vets Memorial and in some, in front of some of the restaurants there, they have bronze statues. And Clovis is just a real, real small community, but you might look that up, too. And National Harbor in Maryland has done that for some of their street art. So thank you very much.
All right, thank you.
And thank you very much for being here. Any other questions, comments?
Comment.
I think this is great. I think that the developer, doing all these things to accommodate and to work with the fire department, really shows the intent of the developer to improve the community. I think, you know, it doesn't go unnoticed. And so I want to thank, I also want to thank the family for being here and being part of the process and really giving your input, as well as to the fire department's rep. You guys have really taken the time and been really thoughtful about this. And I just want to say thank you to everyone who is keeping the memory alive and really making sure that it's with the history of the city long-term. Thank you.
Thank you, and thank you, Mr. Hackelman. This report will be received and filed. Our next item is report by City Manager, Mr. Stillwell.
Thank you, Madam Mayor and members of the council. The next meeting of the City Council is March 21st. We have a number of items, the primary being the user fee update, the annual update, continued from the last year's update, and also the Measure U Committee Report, General Plan Annual Report, and then the Business of the Month. And that concludes my report.
So we'll do reports from council members and, what? Oh. Mr. Cordero.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. On the 23rd of last month, I was on a Zoom meeting for the CCWAA, which I have to say is much more complex than anyone knows until they're in it. I should thank Mayor Lavignino for talking me out of trying to get it back in 2008 and suggested it was too much to handle as a brand-new councilperson. And then on the 3rd of this month, I did the Read Across America up at Taylor School. And that's always interesting, the young people that I read for was exciting for me. I attended the Black History Month work at Lavignino Plaza in front of the library. And then on the last, just last Saturday, I attended the Gathering Out at Pioneer Park that was put on by Lawanda. The weather was not incredibly accommodating, but there were still quite a few people, and it was quite enjoyable. And they had several speakers, and Lawanda was very appreciative that we were present there. And they had a lot of people and organizations, communifiers there, and several city departments, the library, and just a great meal. And it was reasonably well-attended for the inclement weather that we had. And that would be it for me, Madam Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Escobedo.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. On March 3rd, I had the pleasure of participating in the Read Across America event at Taylor Elementary School, which was really interesting. It was my first time, it was my first time doing it. And the students was, after we read, they started asking questions about local government. That was really fascinating to hear from them. Carlos, you know, how do you guys make sure that our trash is picked up on time?
Well, you know, I was coming here for a reading, but like, stuck about it. So I think, and the instructor, she was great. And she also, I believe that she helped a little bit with those questions. But it was a really interesting experience. I barely was not able to get out of that room because they keep asking questions. So it's just, it's good to see them as, you know, in a joint age, trying to know more about local government and how things run in this, in the city. So really, a shout-out to everybody who made that happen and looking forward for next year. Thank you.
Ms. Aguilar Hernandez.
I will go last.
Oh, Soto.
On Wednesday, February 26th, February, on Wednesday, February 22nd, I attended a Mobile Home Park meeting with Mobile Home Park residents. And it was facilitated by Mr. Hackelman. On March 1st, I, oh, no. Oh, and then on March 2nd, we had another meeting with just Mr. Escobedo, myself, and Mr. Hackelman regarding the updated model lease agreement or progress that we're making there. And that is all for my oral reports, Madam Mayor.
Thank you. Aguilar.
I attended the Read Across America at Taylor School, second and fourth graders. I threw the first pitch at Southside Little League, and I attended the Santa Maria Girls softball opening ceremony. I also attended the Ben Hayes Show. And I also attended the City Investment Committee meeting.
How did that pitch go? Because some, was it okay?
Yeah.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, it was good.
I've had to do that before. That makes you real nervous.
Yes. Yes, and so I had, I guess you could do your report, but then I had a request.
Okay. Go ahead and do your request, and I'll do my report last.
So I reviewed the Santa Maria Valley Mayor's Youth Task Force on youth safety, and I wanted to request to put on the agenda the review of the ongoing community needs assessment to determine the specific programming approaches towards prevention of violence, the families and community. And so I wanted to know what the current numbers are. In 2017, the numbers were that 3.7 were in a household. There was a projection of 300 people would be added to the schools. So, which means about 4,725 children per district. I would like to agendize possibly a youth and children's safety and just recreational program in each district to enhance the mayor's task for on youth safety.
Okay. Do we do those periodically, needs assessments for our youth?
Yeah, we do those, that's what I thought.
I would be in favor of agendizing a needs, a discussion about putting, revisiting the potential of updating the needs assessment.
Okay.
And then the other thing I wanted to agendai was the compensation for City Council.
Okay, go ahead.
I'm hoping to hearing a conversation, having a conversation about that. And what, do you have an idea of what you want to propose?
So there is others.
Oh.
Oh, yes.
How about we bring it, and we'll talk about it?
And then we can talk about it later. Okay. Okay, yeah. Can't discuss it. Okay, thank you. So, do you want to put it on the agenda?
Yeah, that's fine.
Got it.
So, Mr. Escobedo.
Yeah, just, so that would be two items, the assessment and the compensation.
Yes.
Okay.
Okay. February 21st, I did the Ben Hayes Show. On the 22nd of February, I attended Marion Foundation Board of Directors Meeting. On the 23rd of February, I did the Business Expo and visited the Jet Coast, Central Coast Jet Center. On the 24th, I did the Rick Blaymeyer Radio Show, did the City Leadership of Santa Barbara County, which was supposed to be in Long Poak. We did it via Zoom. Then I attended the Alan Hancock Fine Arts Complex Grant opening. You were there, right, Soto? That building is absolutely beautiful. If you haven't been out to see that, you need to go over and see that. That would have been, I mean, you would see that building at any university, the Fine Arts Building at Hancock.
Oh, yeah. That's right, that, I was there for that.
Yeah, yeah. Mr. Cordero was there. On February 25th, I attended the Livable California Teleconference. And on the 26th, I don't know why they have this, this is on a Sunday afternoon at 4 o'clock. They have the California Alliance of Local Electeds. On the 28th of February, I had a LAFCO orientation. On March 1st, I did my APCD Board of Directors Agenda Meeting, and I did a meeting on the Richard Ranch Project. On the 2nd of March, I did the Read Across America at Tunnel School. And I did the Read Across America on the next day at Taylor Elementary. And that's probably the only place that you go as an elected official where people are really happy to see you. And like you say, they don't like to see you leave because they want to talk to you some more. So anyway, on the 2nd, I did a LAFCO meeting. And LAFCO, I'm now in that LAFCO Committee for the county, which is land use, and they also deal with annexations. On March 3rd, I attended the Partners Board Meeting, which is a countywide meeting with the Santa Barbara, Santa Barbara County Schools. And on March 5th and 6th, I was down in Riverside for a meeting with CalCog, which is part of SB CAG. And they deal with transportation, roads, housing, broadband. And one message we came away, everyone keeps saying, "One size does not fit all," and they want Sacramento to realize that. So anyway, and ladies and gentlemen, this meeting is over.
Thank you.